Also wishing to speak on Dearborn Unified Gymnastics, Annalise Heaton.
Hello, um, a lot of what I'm gonna say, I did send in an email to the board members and many of the athletic directors, um, earlier this afternoon. I may have waited to speak at the board meeting, had the board meeting been a week or two down the road, but seeing as these happen once every month, I felt like it necessary to appear here today. I did hear back, um, this afternoon, um, from, I'm not supposed to say anybody's name, right? From one of the athletic directors, and he says he has some answers for us, and so I'm excited to hear his answers. As an introduction, my name is Annalise Heaton. I have six kids. We have been attending Dearborn schools for the last 12 years. My oldest is a senior at Edsel, and my youngest's are in second grade at DeVal. My daughter has enjoyed participating in the gymnastics team, and she was really sad when it was canceled. We don't really understand why the program was canceled, and we were never given that information. Um, we don't believe that it's particularly costly in comparison to some other sports, and the team was open to all Dearborn Public High School girls. I am really hoping that we can open a discussion about this issue. I would like these questions answered. Why was it canceled, and what can we all do to get it reinstated? I've thought about three possible reasons that the program was canceled and possible solutions. One that Kyla mentioned was low participation, and it is true. The numbers for the team have been decreasing over the past few years. But the other truth is that the program has not been promoted at all. Whether, I don't know necessarily whose fault, but I think that a lot can be done with students, parents, coaches, and staff and administrators to be able to fix that and to get the word out about the program, because it really is a great program. The nature of this sport, it tends to draw the more quieter, reserved girls, and they're the ones participating in gymnastics. Therefore, they're not as outgoing and, and, and having a huge group of friends and being able to spread the word and that type of a thing. And I also know that there are other teams within the district with very low participation, and so I am wondering why gymnastics was chosen to be cut. So I am asking, will the administrators and coaches be willing to agree on maybe an average number of participants that would make the team viable to continue, that we would have to carry throughout the years? Another concern may be budget. I don't know if that was a concern in canceling the program, but that would be very upsetting, since I know the athletic directors in the district received promotions and raises at about the same time our gymnastics team was canceled. Under Title IX, not only does the district need to provide the same number of opportunities for girls to participate, but the funding should also be allocated equally. Um, so for a budget solution, I'm asking that administrators be willing to work with our coaching and on sticking to a budget, or cutting costs, or doing whatever they need to do. And many of the parents, and the kids, and the coaches have suggested many options to make the gymnastics very, very low cost as far as driving students to meets, getting help with judging fees from other teams, or the, um, the judging, um, board. Other things, we already have our equipment, we already have the space to practice in. So all we are asking for is the same percentage that the other sports are receiving. Another factor may be progress and improvement, or are the administrators not happy with what kind of progress has been making with the program, or don't feel like, um, they maybe have high enough scores or rankings? Again, the individual nature of this sport, this team, makes it so that each athlete is able to progress and improve at their own personal level, and as Kyla stated, they are progressing at their own personal level. So I'm asking that coaches and administrators work together to improve practices together, so that this can be a continuing and growing program. The Dearborn Unified Gymnastics team in our district fills a need that is not met any other way. The team is all-inclusive, no cut. This allows students of a range of personalities and cultures to feel comfortable participating. The fact that gymnastics, the fact that gymnasts are on a team, they practice, they progress, and they compete individually, means that they are able to start at whatever level they are on and work from there. Over the years, there have been multiple special needs students that have benefited from this program, and their teammates benefit from that association also. Girls that participate in gymnastics are not likely to pick a different sport instead. Um, this is just my personal opinion, but from what I have seen, the types of girls that participate in gymnastics, they are not super aggressive, so they're not interested in those aggressive types of sports. So from my experience, they're more quiet and reserved, why, which is why gymnastics program fills a need not met by any other program. I know that answering these questions might be hard, and we might take some time and thought to come up with a plan, but it is worth it. I hope that you'll revisit the district's adherence to Title IX. According to the AAUW, research has shown that girls thrive when they participate in sports, and graduation rates are significantly higher for female athletes than for female students in general. Participation in sports teaches girls important professional lessons. Eighty percent of women identified as key leaders in Fortune 500 companies played sports in childhood, and so did eighty-two percent of executive businesswomen, a majority of whom said the lessons they learned on playing in the field contributed to their success. And there's other statistics that I listed down there, you can read in the email. Um, we would really like this opportunity to be available to all the girls in the Dearborn Public Schools, and I hope you will reconsider the decision that was made last spring to cancel the program, and we can work together as administrators, as coaches, as parents, and as athletes to make this a viable continuing program. Uh, would it be all right if I had everybody who came to support the gymnastics program stand up tonight?
Sure, if I can stand up.
Thank you. Everybody that came here to support gymnastics, stand up, please. Thank you. Um, like my daughter said, we started a Facebook group to kind of just let people know what was going on, and we've had a lot of interest, obviously more than are here tonight, so not everybody can make it to board meetings. Um, I do have to say, I was frustrated and upset by the way that it was handled with the gymnastics team being canceled. My daughter was called into the office and told it was canceled, and there was nothing she could do about it. Uh, the, from what I heard, there was not really a coordination with the coaches as far as like, uh, why, and anything that they could do about it. It would have been much more appropriate if we would have said like, you know, your numbers are getting really low, we're not able to bring them up, you know, this isn't going to be able to continue in the program. So, um, I appreciate your time, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next wishing to speak about the gymnastics team being canceled, Katie Radnaski.
Hi. My daughter was the captain of the gymnastics team last year. She was one of those kids that came in onto the floor and only knew how to do a cartwheel and a somersault. Time she got done in 12th grade, she was doing flips off the beams, backflips on the floor, um, twists on the vault thing. She gets mad at me when I say that, but she went from a straight jump to doing a, like a half twist off the vault. And because of that, gymnastics is what kept her in school. She's not like my son. Dr. Malinkova was my son, Austin Armstrong, and they're totally opposite kids. For a kid that hated school, she graduated with a 3.5 grade point average, and I contribute that to gymnastics. Now she's at Paul Smith outside of Lake Placid, New York, pursuing her dream as a park ranger, and I do contribute to Michelle and Dan, and Lauren, and Jamie, past coaches, that gave her this opportunity. The gymnastics team is not supported. It is not, like Kyla said, it's very a well-kept secret. The way we found out about it was, my daughter was determined to join the swim team, and I swim for Dearborn High, and I was like, I can teach you competitive strokes, I can teach you how to do that flip turn and that, how to go off the starting block. Oh, Mom, you don't know what you're doing. So one day, we were at Stout, we're doing competitive swim lessons on their enrichment program, and I saw the girls practicing in the gymnastics. I'm like, I must have missed gymnastics on the enrichment program. And I walked into the gym, and I talked to Dan, and I was like, oh, well, she doesn't have any gymnastics experience, and Dan took her in. And as for the girls, the rest of the girls I can speak for, I used to record the scores for five years, because Dan let my daughter start in the eighth grade, and that was the condition of my daughter starting practicing with the team, was I come in every home meet and record the scores. And I see these ladies right here, their scores went up and up and up from the, from the first home meet to the last home meet, and I am so proud of them. It's not an easy sport to learn, it's a lot of muscle memories, and they just progressed. And I would hate to see them lose everything they worked so hard for last year, to lose all that skills this year. So can we please reconsider this? If you need a liaison with my kids who graduated, I am more than happy to work with the board, with the athletic directors, to find us a solution to this. So, I don't know, it just, it means the world. And my daughter was really looking forward to coming home from college over winter break and mentoring the girls. And another thing about the girls is, they work their butts off at home meets. They really do. They gotta set up their equipment. While the rest of the teams, they come in at a warm-up time. These girls are here 45 minutes to an hour before warm-up time, setting up that floor. While the rest of the sports teams get to go home, they have their after-action meeting with the coach, you know, and then 15, 20 minutes after the game is over with, they get to go home. These girls are still here after nine o'clock, 10 minutes to 10, still cleaning up that gym to go home. Their home meets are five hours long. They go from five in the afternoon to five, or to 10 at night. No other sports team does that. My daughter was on JV soccer for two years, and she was also on diving, and they did not do this. So, don't tell these girls that their hard work is for, absolutely for nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have five more cards, people that do not wish to speak, but would like to make comments regarding gymnastics. All the comments are along the same lines of please consider reinstating the gymnastics team. They are from Michelle Wilson Schwartz, Malik Altabi, sorry if I mispronounced that, Sharon Stanek, and then there are two without names on them. Next is Cheyenne Brown from Fortson, wishing to speak about the busing situation to the Michael Berry Center and the responses she's gotten from Fortson administration.
Hi. Um, I'm Cheyenne. I'm an 11th grader at Fortson. I spoke about this issue the last board meeting. Um, I'm happy to say that the buses are in fact less crowded, but, um, as we were informed that we would have assigned bus numbers, we still haven't got those. Um, we have no idea how to do this. We don't know how to disperse ourselves to those three buses. We don't, like, as students, we don't know how to do that. And one bus is overcrowded, and another's almost empty. And a month ago, we were told we were gonna get bus numbers, and we haven't. And I'm, I was informed by my mother, who attended a PTA meeting at Fortson while I was at a swim meet, that a roomful of parents were told that all students had a bus number, and that's not true. Like, no one that I know has even been told that we were gonna get bus numbers. And I'm so upset about that. Like, it really aggravates me that someone told these people that we were getting these, and we didn't. Like, all these parents are now not worried about what their kids are, kids are going to school in, because they were told by an administrator that they had bus numbers, and they don't. Um, the fact that a few administrators rode the bus shortly after I spoke at the last board meeting, but an administrator, a seat in front of me, sat third to a seat with half of their body off this, off the seat, and nothing happened. Nothing that students could have known happened. There might have been discussion behind closed doors, but not another bus, no bus numbers, nothing. That administrator would have been severely injured had that bus gotten in the accident, because he wasn't on the seat at all. You know, it... Those unavoidable, unsafe situations that were happening the first few weeks of school lasted until about the end of September. They've been reasonable the past couple weeks, you know, this October, but we don't have, we don't know how to do it. We, we can't manage this by ourselves. No, there's, like, the drivers aren't helping, no one out there at Michael Berry or at Fortson is telling us, you should get on this bus, you should get on this bus. Like, the bus drivers are just telling us, if you can't find a seat, go to the next bus. So we're all trying to GM onto one, because we think all the buses are gonna be full, but then the third one is almost completely empty. Um, the, um, I would like to see this issue resolved within the next couple weeks, as I expected it to be the first time I spoke. Um, but I would like to say that I do love this district and my school, and I believe that there are things that we have the ability to prove and make better. Um, but as a student, I'm dedicated to the safety of students and my own personal integrity, and I couldn't avoid speaking up about this issue. I greatly appreciate the platform that you give students and citizens to speak their mind on district issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I know we have Mr. Andrews here, um, and I'll make a comment. I know Ms. Alkodra, I believe that we were looking at a way to evenly divide the students, right, with either counters or clickers, and we've talked to administration. Actually, riding the bus happened to be me, so I was the person that was on the bus. And actually, our administration is going to, so that we get a good understanding of the entire district. I happened to go to Transportation on that day, and met with the Transportation Department to talk about the, um, just the bricks, informational, informational only. Um, and then we went and we rode the bus, just to kind of get a glimpse of what was going on. Um, we're actually planning to, so the bus drivers reached out to us and would like to see us on others. So we're actually planning a day where we're gonna have everybody go around and kind of get a good idea of the buses. So a couple of things that I discovered is, one is that through, um, and I did email the board on this, you know, through possibly dividing up better, and I know Mr. Andrews had talked about a way that we were gonna look to implement that. Um, I will tell you that I felt totally safe on the bus. I sat. It was true that, you know, my one leg was towards the middle, but I'm being honest that would I want, would I have wanted to sit on there for an hour, or an hour and two hours driving? Um, no, but for me personally, and I'm six foot, about 180 something pounds, I was, you know, driving to Fortson, I felt like I was, you know, fine to drive the bus where I was. Made sure I sat with two fine young men, and I had a conversation. Um, I would say and acknowledge the students that it's definitely more comfortable, you know, not sitting in threes, so that's, that's the truth of the scenario. Um, but I think we're gonna try to work, and I know, Mr. Andrews, you've talked to me about that, numbers do tend to, to subside over, um, over time, and we haven't ignored it. So we've had this on conversation of cabinet. We're trying to balance it, you know, with budget, along with, if we had the ability to add the buses, and we talked about cost. Um, so we definitely, and I appreciate, um, student who came up, and I know she's sad, I appreciate the viewpoints of all the students who come up here. I think that's great, sharing viewpoints, and that's kind of why I wanted to go on the bus, to get just that view of what, what goes on. Um, I do feel like the organization will help, because a lot of students did want to get on the first bus, but when Ms. Peterson and I got them on, divided equally, then there was enough room, where maybe there were six people, the seven, in a three-seat, and most were in two. And in some cases, because students tended to want to go to the back, but there were seats in the front. So it was also just the organization, from what I saw. And so I think we can do a lot by doing that, and I don't know, Mr. Andrews, if you wanna, and again, I appreciate the student coming forward and speaking. I give her a lot of credit, commend her for that, but I know we talked about clickers, or ways to kind of divide up, and I know the administrators, both at the Berry Center and the high schools, especially because Fortson said they would work to try and help alleviate that and organize the buses.
Yeah, and I can confirm all those comments myself. I know the principals have been out there, and Ms. Green has been out there every day, uh, helping with the students. Um, I myself have been out there a few times, and on behalf of the clickers, it was a great idea, that we've been using those. Um, and it looks like we're gonna expand that since they work so good, especially like on the first week of October, when we have to do our state counts for the, you know, for the school district. Um, so we're gonna utilize them for...
Yeah. So we talked about assigning, but what happened was, we found out that the just general division was better, so we made the decision not to assign, because it was easier just to say, once you get to that number, rather than having...
It was, it would be a speedier thing than assigning, and then to get the students by bus with an assignment.
Exactly. So to expand on that, so from my observation, and I spoke with both, both principals, we both confirmed from our observation that, uh, the students have, were kind of assigned it on their own. So what I observed is, when the students came out either from the building at Michael Berry Center, or when they got there in the morning at Fortson, they already knew kind of what buses they were going to. So the challenge was, as a student, those were the daily riders. So the challenge was on the students that don't ride on a daily basis. So those are the ones that we would have to, we have to work with to disperse. And I can tell you from speaking with my drivers and the chatting on the radio, the drivers have been doing a good job with working together and asking, you know, who's got some room and who doesn't, and sending the students over to those buses.
So are we going to then continue with the, there will be no assignment of students with a particular bus number, so that we can expedite the transfer of the students onto the buses and get them back to the building?
Right.
Because it is time-consuming to validate each kid is going onto the right number of bus?
That's correct.
So is that what we can tell them? Is that we're, we're just making sure that there's an equal amount being dispersed into each bus? I'm not certain where the confusion is with the students, then, who are saying they don't know how to do this on their own. Is there, is, is the bus driver sitting there going, okay, one, two, three, four, five, okay, we've got, move on to the next bus?
That's exactly what he's doing. That's exactly what they're doing.
Then isn't that kind of self?
Yeah.
Selecting then?
Yeah, and it's been... For my feedback, it's been going really well for the last two, three weeks, or longer.
Then, yeah, so...
So it seems like there's been a problem with communication, that it's not always getting back to everyone if, if the administration thought it was gonna be one-way, and it's not going that way. And the second thing is, we're just talking about these buses where there's not assignments. That's different than the normal bus a child would ride from their...
From their neighborhood, right?
That's correct. That's absolutely correct.
There's still an assignment from your neighborhood. Yes. Yeah, so maybe that's where the PTA was having a conversation about, was, I don't know.
Could be. But that is correct.
Between the high schools, and I know Ms. Alkodra's here, we can work to make sure that we get that posted to the blog, or whatever.
Get, get a clear explanation of what the process is going to be, and what the students' expectations should be.
Yeah, I can work, I can work with her. Yeah, and we can get that.
All right then, thank you. Oh, Trustee Barry.
I understand the problem of assigning buses. I understand it, but a couple of things here. I did hear from a student, just walked up, we knew who I was, and started telling me that he rides a bus to Fortson, and he pretty much shared the same issues that we heard tonight in the last board meeting. I got a question for you. Without assigning students to a certain bus, can a student from the Michael Berry Career Center that's supposed to go to Edsel Ford, jump on a Fortson bus and go to Fortson?
It could. It could happen.
I'm telling you, they do. I hear from these students. And if they decide they want to go shopping on auto-drive, they jump on a bus to Dearborn High. So we need to look into that. I mean, obviously, safety reasons. Now, I understand it. We got three, four, five minutes, we gotta get these buses going, or people are gonna be late. I get that part. You have a very hard task on your plate. But the fact that I heard that kids just decide where they want to go, I mean, we need to look into that for obvious safety reasons. Can somebody else jump on our buses? I don't want to put that out there, but I've heard from students that, yeah, wherever they decide to go, they end up going that day. So it's not an easy, it's not an easy fix, but we need to look into a little bit further. Thank you.
Can I suggest something? And maybe the, um, Transportation can look into it, and it, I don't think it's that costly, and it could resolve this issue easily. Each student could be given a QR number, and then you have already assigned those students. If you're saying, okay, how are you gonna validate it fast? And you have that QR reader, they just scan the card, either with their phone, or they print that card, and then it just tells them they're green, it tells the bus driver, you're on this right bus. Or you go on the red, if it says red, then you're not on this bus, you have to go back. And it's very quick. So I, I would hope that we look outside the box of...
We tried something similar to that.
And what was the problem? Why didn't it work?
The problem was if, we didn't want to deny the students if they didn't have, so if they, say we used their phone, if they forgot their phone. Um, and at the time that we used, they didn't have the technology with the phone, it was actually a card.
Or just print the QR card in it.
And they didn't have the cards.
But if they didn't have the cards...
We started this a long time ago.
Don't they usually have to have their student ID at any time?
Yeah, well, you'd be surprised how many people are...
You would also think they would know which school they should go back to.
No, no, no. It's not, it's not which school they go back to. They choose. They choose. They choose to go to Fortson or Edsel, you know, depending on what's going on. They want to visit their family member on one side of town. It's happening, Jim, I'm telling you, it's happening.
Yeah, this is the first I've heard of this one.
Yeah, no, it does happen.
I'm, I'm not denying, it doesn't surprise me, but it's the first I've heard.
I think of teaching responsibility, we really need to hold these students accountable. I, I don't see that as an issue. Uh, I go to work with a badge, and if I don't have my badge, I get, I can't get in.
But we can't, we can't tell a student...
I know we can't deny a student. That student can talk to the bus driver, he could page whomever and validate that on the spot. I don't know how...
We don't want to, but the buses have to get back. There's a time issue.
I know that there's a time crunch, but...
We've had this discussion at cabinet, and it's a very...
It can't be that one bus is half-empty and one bus is overcrowded. This is not right.
But as far as the cards and that, not per se the balancing, but we've had, they've put this on the agenda, Mr. Andrews and Mr. Wall, a couple of times, and we've had deep discussions, because you're right, there's positives to it, but then there's the kids that they wouldn't bring the cards. So then what do you, you know, so we've had these discussions. We'll continue to have them and try to, you know, maybe see what other districts are doing in those areas, too. The difference with the Berry is that we're talking about the shuttle back and forth versus, like you said, the assignments of kids that are going to specific school in the morning. So that's kind of different. And there's some districts I looked at, for example, in, you know, some, I've seen it in other states where they, they just call them shuttles, where they're shuttling around. So maybe there's some other things that we, we look at, and they do that for the high school students, so...
Sure.
You know, especially when we're dealing with...
Yeah, there's technology out there. We can look in, we can look into it.
I'm pretty sure you'll find a lot of great resources with technology.
So we'll look at that. We'll look at some ideas.
All right. Is everybody good? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next will be Ahmed Nastin wishing to speak on diversity and inclusion.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ahmed Nasser. I'm a father of five. Uh, they go from Hennepin Community College to one of the elementary schools. Uh, on September 23rd, there was an incident in one of our good schools, okay? Uh, it's under investigation right now. We're not gonna jump to conclusions or anything like this. However, it triggered a dialogue in the community. Some of them are just believing the fact that we have this kind of comments, or racial issues, or bullying, or, uh, anything like this that happens in our good schools. And others believed it, and they're outraged. However, when I talk to my kids and my neighbors, and some of, kids that have graduated, they really talked about these issues, you know? I'm not gonna talk about bullying. You thankfully addressed that, the issues of harassment, bullying, or discrimination, or racism, you know, prior, and I believe in our system. I believe in Dearborn, you know? I'm here, and I'm not planning on leaving the city, you know? And I believe in you that you'll take, you know, the extreme measures, and, and, uh, and, and... and be in fear to everybody. However, what I noticed from talking to kids, my kids and my neighbors and stuff like this, and even past experience, and my experience in one of the high schools, that there is a gap and it keeps increasing day by day between the students and the staff members, whether teachers or the principal office. And this gap is based on mistrust. So instead of having our teachers and staff members, the role models, the people who go to, when I have an issue as students, who should I go to? I should go to my teacher first. If she can, then I believe and I trust my principal and the office. The office should not be the place where we punish our kids. No. I believe it's the safe haven for the students. I believe that the teacher in the classroom should be the role model when any students have an issue, whether the student's students or even at home, should go to the teacher. You know? Maybe I'm talking about an ideal, you know, or perfect world. But I'm talking about the most honorable, in my opinion, the most honorable job in the world, you know, which is teaching. And I mean by this educators, not people who come to schools, just collect a check and go home. You know? And it's, we are, and we have two choices. See there, we have a system, we choose to believe that we have a system without complaints, without issues. And this is, I don't believe it's far, I believe it's far away from reality. And the other choice is we believe that we have a system with problems and issue, but we are brave enough as a community and as a board to stand up and deal with them. And I wish for all of us, you know, community, and as you mentioned, churches, mosque, any organization, non-raptor organization or proud organization, you know? These are our future. These are the kids who's gonna, when they sit here and lead the education system. These are, they're gonna be presidents and mayors and these are the most valuable things that we have. You know? This is a very emotional subject to me, you know? As I've been through it so many times, you know, based on the religion and the culture I came from. And as Adil mentioned, he's been bullied and stuff. But regardless of the rage, let's be blind for a second, you know? We will not tolerate this. I'm talking from a community point of view and I believe that you believe the same thing. You know? And I believe in my humble opinion, I mean, you addressed most of it and you understand it better than me. This is your specialty, you know? I believe that we are in need of reevaluation, our teachers, our educators. And I'm sorry to say this, I mean it in the most honest and good way. You know? I trust them and I love them, you know? However, one bad apple could do a lot of damage and that damage will last for a life. You know? We need educators that will make a change, an impression in a student and a child. You know? A good impression that will stay with them for the rest of their life. And I thank you for giving me the chance and listening. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Nashal wishing to speak on a recent incident at Stout Middle School.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Momo Nashal. I'm a father of four students at Dearborn Public School. Three of them are here today. I have Tamam who goes to Stouts. He came to me on the 21st or the 22nd of September. I don't remember exactly. And he told me about the incident that happened at Stouts. I told him that I believe he must have misunderstood the teacher and that, you know, I told him to keep me in the loop and let me know what happens. The next day, the teacher was nowhere to be found. He did not come to teach. Three days later, I contacted the superintendent office and I spoke to the executive director. And I believe she's here today. And she said, on the 26th, our conversation, I spoke to one of the board members here and the executive director. And she said, it was a misunderstanding, it was blown up out of proportion. And the parents are happy with the measures we have taken. It's over. That's when we started rallying as a community and you, most of you know about the protest that we held in front of Stouts. The same day, other parents stepped up and they came to talk to us about sexual harassment allegation with the same teacher. We asked them if they have notified the superintendent. They said they did. So that being said, we're here to talk to you. We trust you and we voted for you. It breaks my heart that other parents are here to talk about gymnasium and other things while we're talking about our daughters and our kids being bullied by teachers. They're told to go back to their countries. This is our country. My parents, my grandfather arrived in this country 80 years ago. I've been to other countries. I've worked in many countries all over the world and I'm back here. This is my home. So please, that being said, we need to know what's going on with the investigation. It's been a month, almost a month now. And last Friday, I spoke to the executive director again. And she said, even if we do reach a conclusion, the community will not be informed of it because of legal matters. We need to know what's going on and we're asking you. Your reaction, what do you take? And whatever you do, it's gonna reflect on how the community perceive this board. We don't wanna be working on ethnic lines or race lines, but this is really dangerous. We do, we live in interesting and dangerous times and we need to act accordingly. My community is deeply wounded by the actions of this teacher. We're asking you here today to form a committee or an independent investigation into this, to the allegations. Oh, we have several allegations. The families are willing to talk to you. The students are willing to talk to you. But unfortunately, they lost faith and trust in the Dearborn administration. We have, you know, we have teachers coming to us and they talk to us about how toxic the environment and the work culture is. We have teachers from our community who leaves Dearborn, go to other cities because of the toxic culture. Please, I'm asking you to act. Otherwise, you're leaving us no chance but to take it to the federal government. And it's gonna be a, unfortunately, we don't wanna do that. And we're asking you. We're deeply wounded. We haven't heard even a public apology to the least. That's what we want. We can start with that, a public apology, and then let's do something about it. Maybe we're wrong. But isn't it fair enough for our students to conduct a reasonable investigation that families and community agrees to? Last, but not least, this is to the superintendent. One of the outstanding students, she was here to talk about staff and she's concerned about staff safety. My question to the superintendent, do you care about students as well? Thank you.
Sorry, I missed that last comment. Did you, the question?
Do you care about the students as much as they care about you? And I mean it. I'm not being dramatic, but as a parent, I am hurt and I'm sure you all can see that. And if you think I have bad intentions, please, sit down with us and see if we have legitimate concerns or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lane, and then I'm going to let Dr. Maleko respond.
Well, Dr. Maleko, of course, can speak for himself. But I would like to say that I have faith in this district. I have faith in our processes. There are, we have worked out processes over many years and we follow the law. The law exists to provide protections for individuals and that includes students, of course. Students are probably the most protected class because they're minors. But beyond that, and we have a legal obligation. I'm just answering, I know we're not, we're not gonna debate about it.
This will not be a debate.
But I do wanna say that I have faith, not only in our system, and we all really should believe in our system because what other system has worked any better? Benign dictatorship? I don't think so. We're a democracy. We have to follow our legal protections. And I have seen over the last few years, Dr. Maleko at work. I can tell you, this man is a very competent and compassionate man. He works so many hours, it's unbelievable. And sometimes we have to ask him not to work all the time. I know that he cares about the students of this district. So I will stand up and say, I have no doubt that he cares about these students. He has proposals all the time to improve this district. So I will answer for him. He can answer for himself, but that's my answer.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Lane. I appreciate that vote of support. And, yeah, I've been in this district 24 years and I could tell you, that's who I've been. I started as a teacher in the classroom. And again, this is all about the students. That's why we had, you know, the signs. They're just an example. You had students up here today. I'm proud of the students who actually came and pulled a blue card. I think that's great. We also have the students on our advisory council. And I know it's getting later, but they've been dedicated. We've been the voice. So yes, absolutely, that's who we are. And that is an expectation that comes from me. And the entire administration believes in our students. So that's the answer to that and I appreciate, Trustee Lane. In fact, you know, that's why, I just love being in, you know, in the schools, interacting with the students. Now, when it comes to issues and things, I do have to disagree on the toxic culture because again, when I see the students and I see the positive and I interact with the teachers and the staff and we have our union here, are we perfect? No. Are we looking to improve? Yes. But we have a very positive, we have a lot of good things that are going on. We just mentioned about Lindbergh earlier. It's not just Lindbergh, it's Becker. It's the 95% graduation rate, it's the 86% college admission. That all is part of the culture and climate of a district. When we do have, I will say, we also follow policy. I also, before I was superintendent, and all the board knows this, is I was the HR Executive Director in Human Resources. So I'm well versed in what the process is, having worked almost nine and a half years now, it's nine plus years at that central office. We follow the process. There is a harassment policy that has mandatory reporting requirements that's on the website that you can find. We have compliance officers that people can report incidents to. The mention of the, I've never, that hasn't been reported to me. What you mentioned about the sexual, no one reported that to me. I'm putting that on the record right now. If it is, I'm obligated to investigate and HR must do that. We do, I, you know, any, there's mandatory process in there that we also go through and hold confidentiality of those who report initially. So we protect the identity. So I want everyone to know that we have policy and board protocol that we follow. We also, also consult with our legal counsel. So it's not just us doing it. We get directed by the district counsel on any decision that we make in an investigation. I can't comment specifically on any investigation because it is true, it's a personnel matter. But we take any accusation serious. But we also must investigate and protect the rights of all involved. And we must adhere to due process of the law according to the Michigan State law. And that's what we do. Any of our employees are under, whether they're a teacher, they're under the Michigan Tenure Act. And if not, they're under the Michigan Employee Labor Relations Act. And so we have to follow protocols that we adhere to and we've always done that. So what happens when we have a situation, and I made a comment earlier about it, is that we have to investigate. And these investigations do take time. You do not wanna rush through anything because you wanna make sure you're, again, once an accusation's there, that's someone's accusation they made, and I'm just speaking in general. And then you have to look into it and verify it and it does take time. And we have Ms. Ali Bazey and we have our legal counsel. We have Mr. Cedarland that gets involved, Ms. Bankhead. We have a whole team. So having said that, this is being taken seriously. We put out a statement. I know people are asking what exactly, we can't, we can't share the details of the investigation. It would hamper the ability. And so I can't comment on any further other than to say that when we do believe there's an accusation made, a lot of times we use something called administrative leave. And the union president had, the previous union president, Ms. Siperle, actually presented on what that means. It's not a finding either way. What it does is it allows us to investigate and make sure that the situation is contained so we take our time. So having said that, there's never gonna be a quick, if it's a sensitive matter, it's not gonna be resolved necessarily quickly. We're gonna take our time. We're gonna work with our counsel. We're gonna make sure that we do the job that is needed to make sure that's fair to all concerned. And first and foremost, we're protecting the interests of our students. And we are also, in doing that, we have a phenomenal teaching staff across the district and a phenomenal staff. You heard the union presidents come. We also wanna protect their rights and to make sure that they feel secure in their positions so that we do continue to have a vibrant and a staff that will continue to make a difference in the lives of students. We're in a teacher shortage, so we have to do that to make sure that our teachers are also confident. So it's a balancing act, but that's what I've done throughout my career and I'm gonna continue to do that. And I appreciate, again, Trustee Lane's vote of confidence and my professional ability to handle this with our team. It's not just me, it's our entire team. And I appreciate the support of the board as we follow this process to allow us to investigate and do our job to make sure that the process is followed. So, thank you.
Trustee Barry.
I know one thing about children. They won't care about you or love you back unless you show them the love and the care first. There's no doubt in my mind, no doubt whatsoever, that Dr. Maleko loves and cares about every one of our students in this district. I'm not gonna comment anything about the Stouts because incident, because that's still going through the process. But we have this podium here and we welcome the public to speak, everybody, including Dearborn Unified Gymnastics. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Barry.
Trustee Moza? I'd like to say a few comments and they're regarding the citizens' participation. And I do appreciate you coming today to express your opinion. This is real democracy here. And as Dr. Glenn Maleko, whenever we receive any allegations that are serious, they are taken per protocol. And we do, and I'm learning this as a new board member, that we have a process that we have to follow. And we have to wait for the investigation to complete. And these things do take time because attorneys are involved and personnel is involved. And obviously, I am, I have, I do agree with Trustee Lane. I do have faith in the system and the process. And also the due process to that teacher, which I'll present in a little bit about Title IX. The presentation that I attended with the Michigan Association of School Boards, which they had a phenomenal presentation on this topic. We wanna treat everybody fairly and equitable and we wanna make sure that our students are safe and that our teachers are protected. I wanna say something, and this is not related to Stouts event, but in the national conversation right now where people can be, unfortunately, openly racist, I hope that's not gonna happen in our district. And if people have any racism within them, I hope that they correct themselves. They seek any training, sensitive training that our district provides. And they ask really their colleagues about these stereotypes that they might be reading or they might be following. Unfortunately, in the past, especially two years, people have been really blunt about their own racism to others. And we just need more kindness in this world to each other. I also wanna say that the teachers are the most noble people in the world. They raise our future generation. And I agree with Trustee Barry that a teacher can make or break a student. I remember being with some of my colleagues when we had the student speaker at Henry Ford Adult Education. And one adult education student said that when she was a student in high school, one teacher told her that she's not very gonna succeed. And she ended up leaving high school because she believed in that teacher, unfortunately. But now I'm glad that she's back and she's getting her...
It wasn't our district.
Right, it was not our district. But I'm glad that she's back in our district to get her GED. And it's because of that teacher, her future changed. And it's because of that teacher, her future changed. So I applaud all our teachers who are doing amazing job. And unfortunately, they're not being thanked enough. And unfortunately, when an incident that is very unfortunate happens, and as one of the speakers said, you may have unfortunately one bad apple. But they do taint the entire profession. But I hope that our district will make sure that our teachers are, um, aware that they have the sensitive training and that they, if, if they can, if they have any sense, and I don't think that's the case, but if they do have any sense of racism, I hope that they correct themselves or bluntly, um. I don't, I don't, I don't know if, I don't, I would not appreciate that my son would have a racist teacher or, eh, for any child in the district. So, um, and I, I, I'm pretty sure that's not the case uh, for, as Trustee Lane for ninety-nine percent. Uh, so I applaud all of the teachers who are doing an amazing job and, and being the role models for these teachers. Because I could recall the teachers who have inspired me to be the person who I am today, uh, from elementary to university level. So, thank you.
Okay, um, just to, just to make the quick statement, um, as a board, we are required to support the entire school community. Students first, but staff as well. And our job is to make sure that whenever anything, um, occurs, that we are as thorough as possible in, um, resolving that issue, investigating, um, respecting the process and making sure that, um, everybody gets their, um, due process, as we've talked about. So quite frankly, uh, we understand and recognize that it's frustrating, especially to those who aren't part of the inner circle, who get all of the facts. But the fact is, is that just like any other, um, organization, there are protections in place for a reason. And we have to honor those, um, as we move forward in going through the, uh, process. So I, I'm sorry, but my sorry is not, my sorry is that I'm sorry that it's a frustrating process. But what I want you all to understand it is that we hear your voices. We want you to respect us in the fact and trust that we are going to do the job that is necessary and required to make sure that everyone is, um, re- protected in this process. And that we don't make a rush to judgment on any, um, decision. And that's what, where we're moving forward with this. And I too, I have my complete confidence in Dr. Maleko. And if he says he didn't get a sexual harassment complaint, trust me, he didn't get it. So wherever they sent it, it didn't end up in front of him. So that's, you know, sometimes people, people say things, but they don't necessarily know what they're saying and who they're saying it about. So quite frankly, um, please give us the time we need. And yes, if it's a personnel issue, we aren't going to be able to share, just like we wouldn't if a student was involved with a problem, we wouldn't give their personal information out either. So that, there are some things that you're, will remain a mystery, I'm sorry to say. But we will do what is in the best interest of the district. Thank you.